Flag. And we follow us with thanks for this day, we thank for the your blessings on us each and every day and keeping safe and. Father, we just ask if you would minister to us today as we make the decisions for the school district of Jackson County, we pray that you shine a glass of blessing upon us where we go out, we make decisions for the district staff and administration and students where we go out, be the best she is for all. Father God, now we just ask all things in your name, pray with me.
Amen. Good evening, this is the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, with my God, with the vessel, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting for Jackson County School District will come to order for July. Looking at your clock, it comes minutes early, but I like to leave it early. Uh, my, my clock, it's close to four o'clock. Um, we do have several citizens requests and I recognize you at that point in time. Uh, if you want to speak something that's on the agenda, please see Ms. James, fill out a card. We'll take that card and recognize you when that item comes up. We do have, we do have a section for citizens requests. That's time set aside to come up and speak to the board. Item, if not on the agenda, I'm going to say today. You're going to speak, we're going to give you three minutes, no more, not today. We've got a lot going on today, we've got to move through a lot of things. We had a workshop on Thursday, we covered everything in great depth Thursday. So if it seems like we're moving rather quickly today, we have spent a lot of time Thursday and last couple of days trying to go through some things that we had some questions about. I know Mr. Shupin intended to school a couple items off the agenda since Thursday. So please be aware of that. And that's the groundwork. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda? For when? Said it. All right, got motion by Mr. Humphrey, got a statement by Mr. Jackson. Any comments or questions or additions and deletions to the minutes? See his own seat booked? Mr. Jackson, won't you? Yeah, okay, if you know, Mr. Shupin intended, we have a-
I think we have one presentation today, correct, Ms. James?
Um, well, there's a couple of citizens who requested your stuff.
Okay, okay.
Uh, let me go ahead and call you. What, or did Mr. Lynn Prilber?
Yes, sir.
Um. Hmm, pass it to Lynn, we can get.
You don't have to do that circus, okay, if I can give one out. I just like it, my pleasure, thank you, want you guys free time.
No, yes, sir, thank you, sir.
Um, good afternoon, my name is Lynn Tobler, I stand over here so everybody can see. Um, what, uh, I'm, my name is Lynn Tobler and I'm the, uh, Veteran Service Program Coordinator with Gulf Coast Children's Advocacy Center. We are based in Panama City, Florida. However, we serve off of the entire Fourteenth Circuit, so we, this particular county, we also provide services for as well. It's free of charge, I'd like to say that first. Now, what we're trying to do is we're, we've been cordially working in Bay County, Washington County, uh, Gulf County. Then we're striving to save families here in Jackson County. And we need your guys' help. Um, what we do is provide services for those kids who are struggling academically and who are having problems with discipline referrals, or who has a very high truancy rate, or not going to school. There's a number, a, a very large percentage of those kids in every community that are struggling in those areas. We provide services, we, if you guys can identify those particular children who are struggling in school, you can connect them to us through a referral process, which we do have, and we can get those kids connected to resources and other services that can allow that child to have an opportunity for a fair education. Um, our basis of our, our, of, of our program is, is trauma-driven. So, uh, most of the kids, I would say, uh, I've been working in this field for six years. Most of the kids who are struggling in school, nine times out of ten, they have some kind, some type of significant trauma going on. It could be abuse, physical, neglect, sexual. It could be, uh, family violence, it could be drug endangerment. There are a number of, of different, uh, areas that these kids get exposed to that prevent them from performing in school. That's where we come into play. And we're trying to help teachers, administrators, the contestants, anyone who can identify, even a janitor, a particular child who may be struggling in school, of course, teachers as well, you, the teachers are the most, they know the most about a particular child who can identify those red flags for us. At that very moment, send us a referral, we would work with the family. We do a, a, a complete assessment on the family and determine what does the family need to allow this child to be successful in school. And, and as we know, if, if, if you empower the family, a lot of the families have a lot of concerns that teachers, administrators don't have time to figure out. That's our responsibility. And we get them properly assessed by a licensed counselor, who then offer recommendations for the child that we implement in a, in a family team conference. Now, the oath, the major model of our program is goal-oriented. A lot of these kids do not know what a goal is. And we try to implement, we don't try, but we actually implement a goal, we allow that child to implement a goal for, for him or her. For example, what do you want to do this year, young man, that you, I obviously wasn't doing in the past nine, uh, three, nine weeks? I need to pass and go to the next grade level because I failed twice. Okay, those are, those are goals that we assist those children in working. Then we find out they don't have counseling, they don't have tutoring, uh, they may need mentoring, uh, they may, they may need outside activities like basketball, football, uh, soccer. We have connections to, uh, a load of resources right here in Jackson County, as we do in Bay County, Washington County, any other counties. And we connect these kids to these services, okay? Once we get them connected, you will see, uh, uh, most of the kids have an outcome, a positive outcome as a result of that. We, we, uh, we also take, uh, I, I take on statistics to determine the impact of our program. And I've been able to really show how significant this program could be for the teachers, administrators, anyone who is working with a child who is struggling in school. So again, we want to give those kids who are struggling a fair chance. And a lot of these kids, you guys can probably pick one out as we speak, has been, uh, exposed to some type of trauma. Um, this is a federally funded program, we work off bulk of dollars, and we have funding available for those kids. All I have to identify, uh, three of the variables. If they have less than, uh, ninety percent attendance, if they have more than two discipline referrals in the nine weeks, or they have a significant low grade level. Now, we, we kind of monitor that. We can have a student that has straight A's, but all of a sudden got a two point O. That may be a red flag. Uh, something could be going on in home that that child is not able to deal with and unfortunately is unable to perform in school. We tackle those areas and do a fine-tooth comb to verify what is going on in the family, get this child connected to all these resources that that child can use, and then give that child a chance to make it in school. That is pretty much the nature of our program. We've been up and running here for six years now, and we're asking for your help. Identifying children who are struggling and that, and get them the chance and get them connected and try to see what we can do to show an impact of our program on those particular childrens and families. So I think I did three minutes.
Yeah, you didn't think I did.
So, uh, but, hey, any questions, any, anybody have any questions as it relates to that?
I'm just pointing this, uh. This kid, and then I, I, I tell you what, uh, man, I, I will definitely have your contact information and, and, and let one of these ladies reach out to you, because I heard free and services for our students, my ears lit up.
Yes, sir. Free, I, I saw that free word was worked.
And services for our students.
When you said ninety percent, uh, to the freight, uh, you might have a lot more to watch, you can hang.
Well, that's what we want, that's what we want. Thank you. And, uh, we are, eh, as you guys know in our community, we have a very high, very, very high truancy rate. Uh, it, it happened as we go to COVID hurricane and a lot of kids. I got kids living in woods, okay? Uh, I don't want to go too much in detail, but it's just that significant of problems that you guys may not have a clue. And all you know is this child is suffering and is struggling in school and causing problems when you're unable to provide, uh, to educate the rest of the children because this child is having so many problems. And it can go across the board, uh, there's no case that's been the same. Homeless, uh, children don't have shoes, they don't have clothes, they're not going to school. Uh, if their mental is not stable, they're not able to, uh, go to school and perform if they have hygiene issues. Uh, there's a number of things that are going on within our communities that we can tackle and help teachers, administrators to try to, so you don't have to do all that, that lead work to come through to figure out what's going on. We can do that, we can get them connected, and then we also show the impact. How did that child do when he or she started compared to when he or she finished? And I have some very great stories, success stories, but I don't necessarily have the time. But I just want you guys to know, this program is very impactful, it can help everyone in trying to save our children and our families. Yes, ma'am.
Mandy Howell is our Director of Student Services, could you give her some cards for her guidance council?
I sure will, I'll make sure we get that link. If you could give her, uh, my contact information, feel free email me, I'll be at work six thirty in the morning, I'll respond just that quick. Thank you so much for your time and I appreciate it, we look forward to partnering with you guys here in the future and the fall.
All right, let me see. Uh, hey, staff.
Hello, I'm, uh, with Jackson Sewell Water, we're District Coordinator. I'm also helping run the forestry in the classroom program. And this year is going to be October, the therapy of October, and it is a free program. So we have local foresters from Rex Lumber or our county forester come into the classroom for fourth graders and educate them on forestry, what trees do for the environment, um, every object's trees are made from, and the responsibility of cutting down and replacing trees. This is a free and educational program for schools. And we're just trying to get our faces out there and let everyone know that we are doing this program this year again. We have actually had a lot of success, success over the last two to three years with it, with Malala and Grand Ridge and the Day Springs School. We just wanted to say, hey, if you would like us to come out, we are more than welcome to. Um, and we're also having giveaways and getting schools to participate in answering emails. And we just wanted to see what would be the best way to your knowledge of, uh, of us getting activities planned and sorted out in the schools.
If, if you'll contact me, I'll make sure that schools, uh, I'm not going to speak for the schools right off the top of my head, but, but, uh, I promise you, if you give me that information, we will communicate, yes, sir.
I actually have my, uh, business card.
Yes, thank you so much, I appreciate it so much.
Love you, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Janelle, I won't talk to them.
Yeah, Alessandro, thank you. Thank you, awesome.
I'm not Janelle, I'm, I'm, I'm past commander of Ted Wall VFW post here in Marianna. And I just wanted to introduce Janelle. She is the first female commander of any veterans organization in Jackson County. And she's an outstanding person.
Good evening, I'm Janelle Alessandro from the VFW, and I'm here with my fellow veterans. Uh, so with all of us here, we represent three separate veteran organizations here in Marianna. The VABs, uh, the American Legion, and the VFW. And I just wanted to, um, you know, ask what I do see it on the agenda. Um, just, thank you, Mr. Grand, it is on the agenda, it's not, uh, just the employees of having a half a day off his share on the academic calendar for birthdays day for the students and the staff. Um, you know, without students, we have no families. Families that do a community that can show up so that we can actually have a very successful advocacy parade once again, like you did in your space. So I don't take the boys' time, I would just, I'm just gonna be like that. We're here and we're anxious and hopeful that this will be passed and that.
And Chairman Johnson, I met with, with this group a couple of weeks back and, and, and spoke about us coming together, uh, November the eleventh is on a Tuesday this year. Um, and our plan is if we can, if the board votes on it this afternoon, for half a day, still feed the students getting home, and then maybe have the parade around two or three that afternoon, and some of the high school bands, cheerleaders would participate in the parade. Obviously, if, if kids are coming out and the parents are coming out, and then, and then so forth, it's just a great organization and to honor our veterans, I, I think it's something good for not only our school district, but our communities. So thank you for your help in that.
Thank you. Listening to our requests and going on tonight, thank you. Do you have anything to say to the board?
Thank you for the service, I appreciate it so much, thank you.
Uh, we, we have any more citizen requests? Yeah, love, Mr. Shupin, but it's over, we're on fire.
All right, five point O, Mr. Chairman, consider the agenda. Let's request these.
Mr. Granberry, say goodbye, Mr. Quillit. Then try to ask a question on five. Chair, you know, some of our little students.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we'll move on to six point O, other agenda items.
So, looking at Mr. Grant, Jackson, second, looking at Mr. Granberry, tell us your question on six.
Some.
Yes, sir.
Um, on six three, um, the Veterans Day, the half a day release, I think you're saying you're going to encourage the schools to participate.
Almost mandate, Mr. Granberry, and, uh, yes, yes.
And, and here's, here's other parades that they need to be encouraged as well. Uh, there's Christmas parades.
Absolutely.
There's, um, the Martin King Parade.
Yes, sir.
They need to, um, our schools, just as you said, like, you know, when our kids come out, parents come out, same.
Yes, sir, uh, I agree one hundred percent. I know, um, in years past, I've went to school in this district for a long time, and worked in this district for a long time, some days, some years we had the day off, some we didn't. Some fell on the weekends, some fell on a Monday, and, uh, but yes, sir, you're correct.
I, I'm all for that, I mean, we used that morning probably for the program.
Not get a wheel in there, just desert the ground.
You have a comment? Do you know, please vote? Okay, if you want, but, uh, so we'll be seeing you guys about two o'clock.
Fantastic.
We'll get a time.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we'll move on to seven point O, other agenda items.
That motion of seven.
I have to mention that except Ivan's seven point one, the man who was in your life, Kent Gibson, Jim Newsom.
Vote for my Mr. Granberry, you have a second?
Second.
I think about him, Mr. Jackson. All right, we do have a couple of cards, uh, to speak, uh, Jeanette Scott.
Let's speak together.
Okay.
My name is Jeanette Scott, um, Coach Gibson was my coach. Don't laugh when I tell you this, but it was back in the eighties. Um, so he was also my teacher, well, my history teacher. Uh, in the four years that we played, uh, I played for him, we only lost nine games. And we were rated, uh, number five in the nation at one point. Um, his record speaks for itself, his championships, uh, he was a good guy, he was more than a coach, you know, to us. You could go to him and talk, talk him about anything, uh, and he was a good guy. And I think it's only fitting and right to name the gym, uh, after Coach Gibson.
I am sorry, I like this, I'm taking back on, um, Jeanette Scott. Um, Coach Gibson was a mentor, he was a coach. Um, he not only coached us, he shared us with his family. So everywhere we went on the bus, we were all together, so we were family-oriented with them. Um, also, I, he taught me in history. So one of the things that I want to say, he made an impact, when we all came from good school, that was coached by Rocky Clay. We were already halfway there, so when we got to high school, when we got to Tim Gibson, Coach Gibson, you know, he picked us up and, and moved us to the next level. I am the class of nineteen eighty-four, we are the state champs. All right. So I say this, that, you know, one thing it is, that, you know, his record does speak for itself, his hard work speaks for itself. His sweat and tears and his family, um, giving up some things to, to travel with us that, you know, to extend their, their family to us. You know, on the games of going back and forth, up and down the road. So once again, I believe that it belongs to him. I believe that it is, is rightfully earned to be named after him. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes.
All right, any other comments? Question, we need more questions, in capture question perhaps, yes, sir.
I just want to say, um, you know, I didn't, I didn't personally know Mr. Gibson, but the thing about it is, we read the story. When you read the story, it is unequivocal, uh, something to eat, to be, uh, celebrated, something to be done, so I, I support it wholeheartedly and, um, I mean, I, I didn't go to Marianna, I'm a Grand Region, but um, there's, there's a lot to be said for what a double amputee to do.
You hear that yet?
Yeah, I, I.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I'll, I'll say this on record, and I'm not a big fan of doing this, but piggybacking on what Mr. Granberry said, there's some extremely extraordinary circumstances and achievements in this situation. Um, I, I did every school, Mr. Gibson there, I never had him as a teacher, but, um, Ms. Marlene did snap me on the hand with a rule a couple times.
Shame on you.
But, um, I, I agree with Mr. Granberry, there, there's a lot to study for what he accomplished there. And I, I'm with you.
All right. All right, please vote. Jeanette, you know. I think you guys were working on a sign or, or something.
Yes, we, we, as a matter of fact, we may try to get with the school and, and, and get some type of ceremonial dedication, maybe here in an opening game or something, we'll.
Clean your girls and boys game.
I think that would be fantastic, I'll get with, uh, Miss Gilmore, we'll, we'll set that up, how about that?
Excellent.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Maybe have that nineteen eighty-four championship championship too.
Yeah, that'd be good. Eighty-nine, one and two, by the way.
Eighty-four was the first. Eighty-four comes before eighty.
You're the most recent.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We will move on to, uh, eight point zero personnel.
So, that's motion, Jackson. Second, Mr. Granberry, any comments for personnel personnel? Did, did we get an update on personnel?
Yes. It just, I'll just go, it's all highlighted. I'll get your attachment, you get the summary, I didn't think, think it was hard to.
Your question being eight.
Where are we, where are we at on as far as current draws? Got people replaced the stars, but I don't think we, we need a year before.
We're going to need money.
But it's not about personnel.
We've got sixteen re, people that have been recommended that are waiting to be cleared, and that's teachers, parents, anything, you know, that was out there. Um, we have a total of thirty-one, they get seized at this time, nineteen more teachers. Um.
So that's nineteen in addition to the sixteen?
That is, that is correct.
And that sixteen is not teaching?
No, sir, it's not, it's parents, you know, um, nineteen teachers, two bus monitors, two bus drivers, a coda, four parents, so it's spread out, and they're spread out, and most of these nineteen have come within the last week, resignations or transfers.
Where are we on the bus drivers?
So, so we're in good shape. Mr. Granberry, um, we're, we're, we, we do have two openings, but we do have some, uh, some applicants that are, that are certified. It's just a matter of putting them in the right place, getting on the right bus, but we're in good shape with that. Yep.
I mean, you used to start out pretty good. That's good, that's good. We did some routing route issue, right? Did some.
Validation.
We, we, we did, we, we did, we did delete a route this year, uh, and combined two other routes into that one, yep.
All right, tell us your question. Okay, if you know.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we'll move on to ten point O, financial matters.
I'll see you in the police, sir. Ten minutes, sir.
Motion, uh, Mr. Granberry said, uh, poor, uh, question on ten. This, uh, Mr. Spoken gave a presentation Thursday. I wasn't here, I'm here. Anyway. No luck here in the matter.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we'll move on to twelve point O, contract resolution and agreements.
Oh, you said it's from this term. Ms. Granberry, say goodbye. What else your question on twelve?
Um. I wasn't here Thursday, but I did listen to it, uh, thanks to Jackson County Times and the care contract that's only at Cotton Hills. Help me figure out why it was, I think you asked the question about why it's not at, uh, to help me, because I think she was at Marian K eight. Rose was at Marian K eight, maybe this last year or year before? Is it, the reason why it's not back there?
That was canon, Mr. Kill, so he didn't want to give.
Yeah, the, the, this Larkin didn't want to renew that contract ever again.
So she just didn't want to go.
Man, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, is Miss C, um, there, I, I do think that, and again, don't quote me on this, but I think at Cotton Hill Elementary, there is not a, I don't want to say a charge, that's not the right word, but there was, um.
It's at no cost to the district.
At Cotton Hill Elementary School, but there was some type of service charge.
And the thing about it is, is, uh, it's all that care can do. Um, they've actually had to downsize over the years, their program itself, and that's the one school is all that it can accommodate. Um, it was picking up MK eight, they decided not to do that. They are still going to have some conversations, said maybe they could work something out where that they could be in on that school campus, but it'll be at the discretion of, of Ms. Larkin to do that, but, um, Cotton Dell has just been where they have been, um, I guess the most deep-rooted, I think that's where they originally started the program.
And I, and I understand that, I, I just, I just, the reason I asked the question is because cotton, Marian K kindergarten is that are jumping on children, uh, uh, under jumping on teachers. And they were actually, the services was being used there and it would be beneficial. And if they would, now, if it's a money situation, I can understand, I love you, but if they could, if they could stay there and it not cost us something, it would, it would really be nice to, because I, um, did have some interactions with some families that were benefiting from that program at Marian K. And, um, that's a large population, uh, not to take any day, you know, from Cotton Hill. And the deep-rootedness at Cotton Hill, I don't understand that. Um, but just as the man stood up here earlier today, talking about the services that's available to our children, that That, which we had not, um.
Tell you what. I'm trying to get an okay financially, uh, and, and see what is provided, not provided, even if they Monday, you have a special session, about that. Oh, yes, sir.
All right, keep now.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we'll move on to fourteen point zero, projects, programs, grants and plans.
Motion back, call it, Mr. Granberry. Tell us your question on Hope King.
Um, just a comment, um, I've gotten a lot of correspondence from parents. That were not completely happy about us throwing away with it. Dress up. Um, so I, 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 um. The, you know, they were, we, we dug that, you know, we dug at that a long time to get it going. And a lot of the parents are now saying that, you know, they, now they gotta go back to buying stuff, you know, and lost color. I just want us to be prepared for, um, the backlash when these kids start wearing. Stuff that, that we're gonna have issues with and from school to school, different schools, doing different things and. You know, this particular school is sending along to ACE and that particular school has let them wear anything they wanna wear. Um, I just, I just need that to be on the record.
I, I think our administrators, as well as our directors, know that, um. Have no problem bringing it back and forth forward. Thank you guys voting on it again. Um, also, um, as far as, you know, if they have certain color polos, they can wear that, that's still acceptable. So they can still wear that, so there, there's.
Acquiring it for.
Uh, it was, but as far as, you know, not needing it, I think the number one thing that we heard from our educators that are in the brick and mortar schools was. Student attendance, people in this school, from, from, from the hurricanes and COVID and, uh, getting them back, buying environment. And sticking grades up, that's, we'll, we'll go try, I'm gonna say if it's, goes south, we'll back up, but.
I was on the border, but it's black and all up in the yellow floors. I was sitting right there. There was a lot of darkness coming from out there. All I can say is this. I don't think we'll ever go back to the rescue. It's not because I'm against the rescue, it's because we done been down that road, I done got beat up. And now we're turning back. I'm not going, I'm not gonna get beaten up again, uh, over something now. The thing that I, I stress, and I've been in a lot of schools. I didn't think the dress code would be in my satisfaction, adhere to all the time. Uh, I'm not the principal of no school, so I'm not managing a school. That's the principal's responsibility, assistant principal's responsibility to manage their school. That's their job. Um, if they felt like that this was, this was have our attendance, to have our school grades, I, I can support it. Uh, only thing that I ask, and I think it's in our, uh, pretty, actually. The way it's written up now is clearer than it was before to me. Uh, I want kids to be dressed appropriately. And that's, that's all I can ask for, just dress appropriately. So mama didn't let us leave home dressed appropriately and I, I'll, I'll let my kids see dressed improperly. I wouldn't, I don't expect. Parents send their kids to dress up properly. And if it, if it's gonna assist and help us, it's better very time of all. So, uh, I think that principals can manage it and they, they true work for better.
Well, I think the key there is consistency from school to school is. Don't let one school do what they want and this one does, we have to be consistent throughout the district. Uh, at the principal and, uh, the, the, that side of it.
And the only way we could be consistently throughout the district is to get that direct information. Or now it's back at the Indian schools.
I, I think we still, that's the, the, the way it's written, there's some teeth. It might not be. In depth as it was before. Um, it took a while for people to catch on before. I kinda like the uniform. I mean, I dress as khakis pretty much every day. It's pretty easy. Um, I don't have to put a full neck that hard. Uh, but I think a lot of parents and. Faculty thought that, that, uh, kids were better served if they could. One thing that I, that I think we're gonna miss is kids were given an incentive. If they done well, sometimes they got to dress as little differently. Won't be able to do that in one. Uh, but I, I think all in all, um, we can, we can. We can, uh, make sure that this gets.
Definitely monitor. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Any other conscious question? Okay, you know.
Mr. Chairman, we'll move on to eight point one zero, fee card, purchase worth of ten thousand.
Captain Bush, remember, Mr. Granberry, say the bell, Jackson. Come out, you're breaking the bowl, eighteen.
Um, yes, sir. On eighteen point two, the weapon detectors that's gonna be available to all districts, how? How will we, um, determine or is the school gonna ask you to? We need them at our school that day or do we have a schedule? How do we do that?
Currently, it will be housed at the Opportunity Center for Jackson. Uh, they have two or three old ones, Mr. Powell, and then we are purchasing, if, if we would see spent. I'll have sent cell stats, uh, two state of the art mobile weapon detector units, one at Hope and then possibly one at the Opportunity Center. If, um, it is needed for, at another school or, um. Uh, an, an after school event to provide extra security, we will have that at our disposal, then I think that'll be a good deterrent in the future. Uh, currently, we're still working on it at the Opportunity Center right now. We may only have one way in and one way out, so that they only be able to use one of the old ones. Currently, at Hope, we'll probably have two, you know, maybe one for the bus and one for the car, so we will still have another unit available that would be. Maybe in the superintendent's office from Rich Kyle, brought the stand, you need to ask me that, that maybe.
But I guess what I'm asking, let's say for instance, and this is hypothetically, we, we get a call at night that so and so is gonna take gun to. Ryan Ridge, or we gonna get up that morning and go set up the weapons detectors at the school.
Absolutely, that's, that's the whole pain behind it is when we get those.
Hopefully, the guys will be at Grand Ridge, uh, making sure that happens.
That tip today, the students will have to walk through it.
Absolutely. And, and, and again, I don't think we're wanting to catch anyone or do anything, but if, if. The public knows that we are having measures that go above and beyond, and this is a turn, then we've already won. And I think that's a definitely, so. Yes, sir.
All right, any other conscious question, LA thing? Okay, you know, uh, next item is superintendent.
I, I believe we're at twenty-one point one, just calls items, a purchase worth of twelve A rounds of grist will swoop.
Yeah, I'm looking about Mr. Pope, let's say, click, I'm Mr. Granberry. What kind of question about playground?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we'll move on to twenty-one point two, request for an additional fifth grade teacher at the race school school from twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Yeah, Mr. Granberry, second. Thank you very much for that. We get out a lot of, uh. We're gonna, we're gonna have more than the less kids over there. I think I'll see. I think it, I.
I talked to Mrs. on the works land and she read on the gust paper. Twenty-eight fifth graders read, you know, twenty-nine fifth graders in one fo- four by four room is a, is a challenge.
Yeah.
So, uh, and that fifth grade, I think is what we will be focused on trying.
Absolutely.
Get some movement and.
That's good.
Oh, everywhere. And it comes test for it, so I think, um, we do help our schools be successful by the laws.
All right, any other conscious question? See what I can vote. And that carries you now, food next bound.
Next one, Mr. Chairman, is twenty-one point three, uh, for an additional position for the twenty-five, twenty-six year assistant principal of Jackson County Virtual School.
Off a motion, we accept the assistant principal's position for the most tourist Jackson County virtual.
Got a motion. We got all of that. That was Granberry. We come from, of course, you know, that one one three.
I know we have school with the dollars. Graduation, I'm gonna not make it to graduation ceremony.
And that carries you now. Uh, after they fly us, we did a food service up there Thursday, J C eight.
I see where, um, Mr. Mister, um, Hunter is retired. He's good. He coming is retired. J C eight is better had, had somebody.
Yes. And they do, um, Ms. Galloway is doing.
Ms. Kay Galloway.
Well, I see anything up.
Don't forget, Mr. Chairman, we do have a special board meeting Monday, uh, at four P M. Um. And I believe we have one the next Monday, we'll adopt some of the. But, yes, yes, sir. One, uh, Monday will be a turn. Yes, sir.
Yes. All right, make sure you put that on the calendar, you may do it better. Here for Monday. Play you anything? And David, how, how good?
Just one thing, um, dual enrollment transportation, um, Mister, um. The weird, um, students that want to dual enroll, that do not have. Transportation, are we still helping them get to Chicago?
I know that we, we have not been doing that in the last couple of years.
Because there was nobody or?
We, we haven't been asked.
Okay.
Yeah.
Haven't been asked.
Right. It's just always been the student gets their, their own way there.
I had a parent that, um, was told, uh, al- allegedly, I was not there, but. They were allegedly told by the guidance counselor that if they could not have their own transportation, that that child could not be on the road. And I do know that, um, a few years ago, we, um, put on. A couple of bus drivers that were eight hour bus drivers that were doing those in the middle of the day. Runs so those kids could participate. And I wanna make sure that if that is the case. Um, please not, let's, let's, let it not be because, um, of transportation here. If we can help those children take advantage of that rear enrollment option, I really would like to see that happen. Okay?
All right. You okay?
Yes, sir.
I know they're out. All lines clear, we jump.